Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the chambers. It's good to be back. This evening, we will begin with invocation, and we have Pastor Sonya Bell from Legacy Christian Academy.
Good evening. I brought some of our children that are going to help me pray for tonight's meeting. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for tonight. We thank you for this meeting, Lord. We ask that your will be done here in this meeting, Lord. We ask for your unity. We ask that you lead us into all truth, Lord. I pray for our mayor, our council members. I pray for unity in this meeting. I pray, Lord, that you have your way, that everything that is to be spoken here and decided will be so. I pray for each city member, for the people of Los Banos, for the hospital, all those that are sick, Lord, the businesses in this town, all the schools, Father. We just, we thank you. We thank you for blessing us this evening. We thank you for every member that is here, for every decision that is made, that is led by you, Lord. And now I just will have Levi come up, and he'd like to pray for the firemen and the police department.
Lord, I thank you for this day, and I pray that you help the firemen and the police, that whatever they need help with, you help them. If there's too big of a fire, I pray that you make sure that they get like an idea or like it rains, and that you bless the cops so that you could help them with all the type of stuff they have to do, like catch a robber, and like that you give them the spirit and the wisdom to, and have the strength to get them. And I pray for the people that work in the hospital, that you give them visions and wisdom to have visions about better things for the hospital, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order at 6:02. And I'd like to ask Police Chief Breezy to alight his allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Maloney. Here. We have a quorum. We'll move on to consideration of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion in our new system? There, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, I have a motion. Do I have a second? And Mr. Lambert?
A second then.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert, to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor? And we can, we can do a voice vote now. We don't have to do roll calls for everything. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Move on to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate and make comments are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the City Council meeting. So when you come to the podium to speak, if you would please state your name and city of residence. Also, at this time, we'll ask if you have a cellphone. If you would please silence it or turn it off so that it won't go off during the meeting. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak in the public forum?
Kathy Ballard, City of Los Banos. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I got out of vital meeting late and ran across the street. I had mentioned previously in an email to the city staff in regards to the review that you're going to be doing tonight in closed session. I've been hearing a lot of disturbing chatter from direct and indirect sources. Our city has some pretty knowledgeable, loyal, and hardworking people. Having been in business for close to 30 years and with employees on and off through those years, almost 300 that I have trained and let loose on the world. I know these people need to be valued and heard. I've been speaking to our council, have seen a lot of changes, and seems everyone adapts to them. All the employees do. Whether it's the city manager, council. Trying to get my breath. They've all adapted to it. Before we lose more of that knowledge, loyalty, and hard workers, maybe we need to change or alter how we're dealing. On a brighter note, thank you for opening our meetings up again. Now, if we can just go back to seven o'clock so I don't have to race across the street, and our commuters are able to be involved in city functions. Because it's hard for them. They can't do it on Zoom. They can't do it on. It's hard. I'd also like to speak on the P-Bid report, but there's no open forum. So I didn't know if you wanted me to say that now or can we have a forum during that time period? I'm not sure. And I also had a question in regards to the 249K for the downtown revitalization design. So let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see your faces here in person. Sandra Benetti, Los Banos, on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy. I just wanted to greet you guys and let you guys know a little bit about our status and where we're at. Enrollment for our electricity generation services started April 1st. It will continue throughout the rest of the year, depending on whether you're a regular customer or solar customer. Solar customers will be enrolled during their true-up with PG&E. So they'll receive their enrollment notices 60 days and 30 days before enrollment, just as the rest of us have. We are here on enrollment. The next enrollment notices that are going to be mailed out are going to be 30 days and 60 days post-enrollment. We held a couple of workshops. The next workshop is scheduled for Thursday, April 21st. That's at 6:00 PM. It's hybrid style, so you can come in person at the Los Banos Community Center or you can join us in real time via Zoom. That specific workshop is for NEM customers or solar customers. And then we will be posting all of these workshop recordings online to our YouTube channel. So if you haven't had a chance to come down or join us live, you'll have a chance to review that material at any point. But I wanted to thank you for your time, and that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in the public forum? Seeing no one, we will close the public forum and move to the consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. Before we do, we still have, we still have the email comment system. Do we have any email comments today? Okay. All right, thank you. So now we will go ahead and close the public forum, move to the consideration, the approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And so we will go to our City Clerk Maloney to read our consent agenda this evening.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 231411 through 232012 in the amount of $2,449,347.33. Minutes for the March 2nd, 2022 City Council meeting. Minutes for the March 16th, 2022 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6477 to oppose Initiative 21-0042A1, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. City Council Resolution Number 6478, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas for the preparation of a downtown master plan in the amount not to exceed $249,901. City Council Resolution Number 6480, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Galvin Preservation Associates, Inc. for environmental clearance and landscape architecture services for the Pioneer Road Widening Project in the amount not to exceed $1,982,098.69. City Council Resolution Number 6481, authorizing entering into an Eighth Amendment to the Landscape Maintenance Contract between the City of Los Banos and Ronnie's, Inc., extending the contract term commencing October 1st, 2021 and terminating September 30th, 2022. City Council Resolution Number 6481, authorizing expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act and adopting a revised budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 in the amount of $107,500 as it pertains to expenditures related to the non-congregate emergency shelter for those experiencing homelessness. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Council, anyone choose to, like to pull anything for discussion or a separate vote? Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 6E, as in Edward, for discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 6F, 6G, and 6H for discussion.
Very good. So we will go first to Item 6E. And Item 6E is being handled by Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So just to give a brief overview on this particular item, it is a professional service agreement with Mark Thomas for the preparation of a downtown master plan. This particular master plan would be specific for the undergrounding of the infrastructure in downtown and for the design of a beautification streetscape plan. This particular downtown master plan is necessary to be able to be eligible for future grant funds that may become available, whether it's through the state or even through funding, possibly local funding from Measure V. This portion, portion of this contract has already been budgeted in this fiscal year, and the remaining portion of the budget will be in next fiscal year's budget or planned for next fiscal year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions, Ms. Lewis?
Just a few, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Stacy, could you, for the council's sake and for the residents who have attended this meeting, just give us an idea as to what other cities may be nearby or elsewhere that this organization has helped with designing their downtown streets and other entities within the design area?
Yes. So Mark Thomas is actually, within the industry, is known for these types of master plans. They provide a superior product, and lots of cities utilize them for these types of plans specifically. The City of Paradise, the Town of Paradise, is one particular city that is utilizing them. They had been already designing a downtown specific plan prior to the Paradise Fire. And as a part of their rebuild, they are now actually implementing their plan and utilizing Mark Thomas to help them do that. Another, and I will note that that is not in the valley, but still a remarkable project to note. One particular project just up the street is with the City of Madera and their downtown. It's Yosemite Avenue and Main Street. That project, a highlight of it, there's a synopsis of it as well as a diagram of what they are providing for that particular city. It, that particular plan is to create an attractive destination to live, work, and play while boosting economic development and opportunities. And that was a great example because that is essentially our goal for Los Banos as well. The City of Sacramento has utilized Mark Thomas for these particular plans as well as the City of Roseville with a specific plan. The City of Lincoln. And that's all listed for you under page 14 of the proposal provided by Mark Thomas. They are known for creating complete streets, which provides multimodal transportation. So it emphasizes pedestrian connectivity as well as bicycle connectivity. But they will be looking at all aspects of the street, and then their engineering team will be looking at the joint trench needed to underground our overhead utilities.
Now, as you said, this is for public improvement for underground utilities and design of streetscape plans. Now, in the terminology of design for streetscape plans, exactly what does that include? Does it just include trees, the sidewalks, and the street? Or does it include anything else?
No, it includes everything from within the public right-of-way. So sidewalk, curb, gutter, asphalt, parking, landscaping. All of that is included in that streetscape.
Okay. So that means that once the City Council comes up with a design that's approved, that any organizations that will deal with downtown, whether it's Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, or any other group, they will have to follow these plans?
This will be the master plan. So this is going to be the guiding document that will implement how downtown is developed and improved.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And it was just for discussion and not a separate vote?
Yes, just for discussion.
Is that correct? Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas, I'm going to go to you and ask, did you want these items pulled for discussion only or separate votes?
Only discussion, Mayor.
Discussion only, okay. So we'll go then to Item F. And this is being handled by Public Works Director, City Engineer, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question as to the funds, the source of the funds for this expenditure and whether there are any grants or any other monies available or is this something that is needed in order to qualify for that? And also, if you could bring us up to speed as to what the total cost of this pioneer project is and where we're at with that, please?
Thank you, Councilmember Yamas. So it's estimated the project's total cost for Pioneer Road Widening to be $72.6 million. Currently, we have various grant funded that's been committed to the city, is approximately $22 million. That's including Measure V, the HIP funds, the LLP, as well as some CMAC fund.
Very good. Now, initially, we had a proposed amount of $82 million. Was that adjusted, and how was that adjusted?
Councilmember, I think currently we are at the environmental study phase, clearance phase. So this is a high-level conceptual estimate for the project. So as we progress forwards, when the project go through plan specifications phase, we'll get a better understanding of the total cost. But this number does have, it's built-in conservatively for the project also.
Very well. Right. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. And then your next item, Item G, also goes to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Tom. Item G.
Good evening, Mayor. This items actually will have Joe Heim, our Operation Manager for Park and Landscapes, actually address any comment or question.
Very good.
Hang on, let me get you that microphone.
There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Councilmember Yamas, how can I help?
Yes, sir. Now, regarding the contract with Ronnie's, what are their responsibilities? And how do we take corrective action and say something that their response before isn't being taken? And is there any, again, what's the protection to the city?
Yeah, so the scope of the contract is landscape and irrigation maintenance. So landscape is bushes, grass, so mowing, edging, things like that. And on the irrigation side, irrigation maintenance at the parks, at landscape medians, right-of-ways, wall planters, et cetera. And we still get billed on a material basis for irrigation, but the labor's included. In terms of oversight for the contract and for the services provided, that is provided by our Parks Division. It is a big challenge for us. There's about a little over 238 acres that we have in our parks and landscapes and medians. So it is a challenge to do that, but that is done through our Parks staff.
Right. And the reason I'm asking, one of the reasons, is that not too long ago, the College Greens Park had its irrigation system completely redone. And in that process, they had to dig out trench lines. And my concern was that this trench line was left open with no engineer tape, nothing to let people know that this trench line, which was approximately two feet wide and at some points, three feet deep. Folks could easily fall into that, and this ran the entire length of the park. So those kinds of things are my concern.
Yes, and I do remember that. So there is verbiage in the contract that asks of the contractor to provide safety clearances, cones, barricades, whatever may be required for the particular project. In that case, it was an oversight. Thankfully, I'm not sure if it was you or a city manager at the time or who notified us of it, but we were able to get out there and correct it. But yes, that is built into the contract as signed a number of years back.
Okay, very good. I appreciate your work over there. And I just wanted to make sure that these things, you know, that we took corrective actions and it's not going to repeat it. And I'm sure it won't be. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And then Item H as well. And that is Police Chief Breezy. Get the podium lit up again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief. These funds, how long do you expect them to last? And what's our long-term goal? What's the end state? Once these funds run out, what do we do then? We're going to have folks that are becoming more and more dependent on these funds and on this shelter. And then once these funds run out and we don't have another source of funds, what's our plan to help these folks either transition away from that or provide them something else?
Yeah, that's a great, fantastic question. I'll try and sum it up as in a small ball here. We understand that this transitional housing dollar is temporary. This program, Project Room Key, was never designed to be a long-term solution to the problem. But we have, we have the desire to move on to other, more permanent solutions in the works, meaning that we want to look for other solutions that are longer-term, that help solve our problem permanently. But that's not an easy task, and that's not a task that we can accomplish overnight. So we were faced with the decision of, do we let this funding expire, close up Project Room Key, the hotel, and basically evict 25 of those individuals at the end of June? Or do we try to provide some stopgap measure that allows us to extend that as much as possible while giving us time to research other avenues? Some of those other avenues, like I mentioned, are studies of permanent housing options. Some of the other ones are, we're looking for a lot of other dollars that don't come out of our general fund pocket, if you will, to maintain that housing. That can be state dollars. There are asks from our legislators. It's county dollars through the continuum of care. But we know that Project Room Key is not a permanent solution. This $400,000 is designed to get us through the end of October, maybe stretch it through the end of the year. If we can do that, that's what we're trying to accomplish. But between now and then, really, the impetus is on us to try and come up with some solutions that provide longer-term goals that are more sustainable at a much more reasonable cost.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that, long-term planning. Now, in regards to our relationship with the county, it seems like they have a lot of resources. They received a few funds here recently. Is that something that we're working on? So that, again, this is an entire community problem, you know?
Yes, the county have been really good partners with us. When we met with them originally over the idea of the partnership to extend the funding this long, they were very willing and accepting of our proposition to go in halves. Yes, they have a larger pot of our per dollars. Are we attempting to potentially use more of that funding? 100%, absolutely we are. Yeah, we're trying to turn over every stone that we can to keep this program as successful as we can for as long as we can, because it's working.
No, you're absolutely right, Chief. It has been working. I went out there. Councilmember Jones and I have gone out there. There are some success stories of folks that they needed a little hand up, and I'm all for that.
Yeah.
I just, again, it's the long-term. Because as you know, we've got a lot of things, a lot of projects, and a huge personnel expenditure in the city. And every dollar is, it needs to be accounted for. But that's all I have. Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. With that, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. And that, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll say that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Mayor, by Councilmember Yamas to approve the city consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carried unanimously. Now, we move to... Now, we move to item seven. Getting news, the last time I sat at this, as pro tem, was so long ago that we had the old system. So this has a new system. It works pretty sweet, but just got to make sure I turn off the old system. People could turn themselves off when they were done. So here, I have to turn everybody off when they're done. So move on, item seven now. Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District P-Bid Annual Report. And for that, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As you may recall, back in October of 2019, the city of Los Banos established, adopted a resolution establishing the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. It was established for five years. It began in January 1, 2020, and it does sunset in December 31, 2024. Under the California Streets and Highways Code, Section 36650, it does require the Owners' Association, in this instance, that's the Los Banos Downtown Association, they're the governance of the Property and Business Improvement District. It requires them to prepare a report for each fiscal year, except the first fiscal year. So this is to report on the assessments to be levied and collected to pay the cost of improvements, maintenance, and activities described in the adopted management district plan. So the city council tonight may approve the report as filed by the Downtown Association or may modify any particular that is contained in the report, and it can approve it also as modified. So in compliance with the management district plan, the Downtown Association has prepared an annual report, and Civitas is here. We have Carson Lambert here from Civitas that will be presenting the annual report for you tonight. Carson?
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carson Lambert, and I'm with Civitas, and I am from Clarksville, California. And good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and city staff. Thank you for having me here tonight to be able to present to you on the P-Bid. And so I wanted to first start with a little information about what is a P-Bid. I know you guys are familiar with this district, but wanted to do a little refresher. A Property Business Improvement District is a stable funding source that is made for groups of property owners that are working together to improve their district. P-Bids are proven to work by providing activities and improvements that property owners have chosen, and that these improvements and activities increase the overall viability of commercial districts or downtowns, resulting in higher sales volumes for businesses, higher sales rent for property owners, and bringing more business retention to downtowns. P-Bids provide funding for programs which are, work efficiently to maintain the area as a safe and inviting environment for all. So it's designed to provide specific benefits to property owners. So these districts are defined and made up of property owners, and they are the ones who determine what services that will be provided. And then the P-Bids will then have an Owners' Association that implement those services for the property owners. Okay. So the assessments, how they work are, the assessments are collected from the property owners with the property taxes. So they are on both property tax bills. So there is two opportunities to pay. The annual assessment is divided into two and collected with the property tax bill, is then forwarded to the city with the payment of the property taxes. And then the city then forwards the assessment dollars to the Owners' Association. The Owners' Association then manages these funds and provides the services that are voted on by the property owners. And these services can include, and I have a list of a whole bunch of them up there, but clean and safe activities, street ambassadors, advocacy for the property owners, signage improvements, removal of large debris, landscape maintenance, et cetera. But those are just some of the services that P-Bids can provide. I thought it would be helpful just to kind of give two other examples of Property Business Improvement Districts. One first I was going to talk about was Downtown Visalia. It was formed in 1998. So this statute was put together in 1994, so this wasn't long after. They have to be renewed. So, you know, Stacy mentioned that these districts can be formed for up to five years and then can be renewed up to 10. So it's important that it goes back to the property owners, and the property owners are voting that they still want these services, and they still, you know, maybe want to maybe change what the services might look like. But it does, it's managed by the property owner. So I just wanted to emphasize that. This district now is renewed through 2029. Their annual budget is $500,000. Their Owners' Association is the Downtown Visalia Property Owners' Association. And they have quite a few of the services that we just mentioned that P-Bids ultimately provide. Landscape and maintenance, security, safety, lighting. A lot of these districts have lighting that is involved. And they also provide some marking and events. The next example I wanted to share with you is Downtown Roseville. This is a little bit more in line with what Los Banos P-Bid has raised. It's about $242,000. This district was formed for the downtown, old town area of Roseville. It was formed in 2015, and it was recently renewed until 2029. Again, they have a Property Owners' Association, the Downtown Roseville Partnership, that manages the services for the Board of Property Owners. They do such things as pole banners, street banners, marketing and events. They have a Downtown Tuesday Night for their property owners, a placement of new solar-powered Big Gulp trash compactors. So again, you see the theme here, a lot of clean and safe landscaping, different services that the property owners have decided that they would like to see more of in their downtown or commercial corridor. So let's talk a little bit about what your P-Bid has been doing in the last year. As Stacy mentioned, the district was formed in January 2020, January 1. And so one of the things I'll mention, and since these districts, the assessments are collected with the property taxes, the district doesn't actually get funding. And so Sharon did not get funding until probably, you know, January, or I'm sorry, February or March. And so then those services kind of lag behind because you're only getting half of those assessments upfront. And so Sharon has done quite a few things with some of the activities that her association has promoted and worked on. Mother's Day in the Park, Wild West Casino Night, fireworks booth, fireworks, the Farm to Table Dinner, biweekly Christmas events, and then the Christmas Window Competition that they had hosted. Some of the improvements that they were able to achieve in 2021, 2022, and these are the four different, or actually, these are the three different categories that they have in their Management District Plan. Maintenance and general security, the installation and upkeep over the 30 tree planters, tree trimming and shaping, partnerships with the city to remove dead trees and plant new trees, some of the infrastructure and developments, downtown Christmas lighting, installation of the pole banners, partnership with the city to add the archway sign, and then marketing and event promotion for your downtown. Great. One of the requirements of the annual report is to talk if the boundaries have changed. Your boundaries have not changed. There are still 83 parcels with 61 parcel owners in the district. And there's a map, and I think you're all probably familiar with this, but I thought we would share it anyway. And I'm not going to go over too much detail in the different four categories that are in your Management District Plan. But as I mentioned before, these four categories were picked by the property owners who then voted on the P-Bid. But they chose maintenance and general security, marketing and placemaking, and small infrastructure development and operations. And these, again, as you can see from the other examples that I shared with you, are pretty common services for activities and improvements. So I believe you guys have a copy of this, so I won't go through and read each of these. But I think I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the bigger things in each of these categories. The pressure washing the sidewalks, graffiti removal, landscape improvements and maintenance, contracting with the private security patrols, all the things that they talked about in the 2020, 2021 activities, they've been delivering on these. Marketing and placemaking, again, Sharon has done, in her association, and I should say her board, have all done a great job at some of the wonderful activities that she's done in the downtown area. It's very exciting. I mean, just from an outsider's perspective, I haven't seen that many activities in a long time, and she does a great job. It looks like it was a lot of fun. I had a lot of pictures that she shared with me for this presentation. But definitely has worked on a lot of different events for the downtown to make it a more inviting, pleasurable place for people to come, and also to learn about Los Banos downtown and why they want to come down and shop and provide, or to use services in the downtown. Small infrastructure, I know that you all know about the pole banners, the wave-finding signage, the actual planters, but these are some of the different activities that they can do in the future as well. So, you know, trash receptacles, bike racks, these are all different things that the property owners at the time of the formation thought that might be a possibility that they want to have for your downtown area. And then, of course, there's always an administrative portion of the budget, and that is paying for strictly administrative costs. So, you know, salaries and for rent and any of those types of things, insurance, et cetera. So as I mentioned, there's the four categories. They have it broken into 25% that is spent on each of those four categories. There can be 10% of each category that is reallocated per year. And so that's something that can be done each year for the budget. The property owners, also the Board of Directors, have the ability, that's written into the Management District Plan, that you can actually increase the assessment up to 2.5% per year. And so the Board of Directors is proposing a 2.5 increase to the total budget, which would be about $3,750.42. And that would give a new overall budget of about $153,000, almost $154,000. Let's see. So the standard assessment formula for standard parcels is a little over 28 cents per square foot, per parcel square foot. For government parcels, it's 21 cents per parcel square foot. And so that is then applied to the total square footage of a parcel, and that's how they come up with the assessments each year. This year, there is a surplus amount, and as I mentioned to you, since these are something that are collected with the property taxes, there is a little bit of lag time of when the actual assessment is collected and then when it is distributed to the Owners' Association. So we're expecting that this surplus will be spent within the next year, but it's about And then there's also a requirement by the statute that the Owners' Association has to raise certain outside funds to pay for the general benefit for these districts. And so Sharon has done a great job with this as well. She actually, we were very modest in what we have here, but she has collected in sponsorships for all those events over $106,000. And so we just contributed, you know, from two events, both Fourth of July and Christmas events, where she collected about $17,291 for sponsorship dollars, which covers and also meets the requirement for the law to have some money for the general benefit. So that's my report, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Well, Council, does anyone on Council have any questions of our guest? Ms. Lewis? Let me, oops, hang on. There.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the Maintenance and General Security Agreement, the pressure washing of the sidewalks, do you have any idea how often that's done?
I would have to defer to Sharon.
Yes, thank you.
Could you come to the podium, please?
Yeah.
Yes, our landscaper is Ronnie, and they do it at least once a month and sometimes twice. And what they do is they don't do it all at once. They do it in segments as they go along, so they try to keep it, all of it clean as they can. And they sweep every week and keep things down. And if there's an issue, we call them and they come and take care of it.
Okay. And another question, under your graffiti removal service, who monitors that for your organization, and how quickly does it get cleaned up?
We don't actually have to do the graffiti. Once this was done, we found out that they have somebody that, it's Stacy, what's the name of the group that does the graffiti? There's, there's somebody from the city area that does.
In the public right of way. So on the public portions, the Public Works Department provides assistance with that. Yeah.
Okay. So in reference to your property owners, if the graffiti is on their property, on their buildings, who monitors that and how quickly is it cleaned up?
We go to them, and they are to clean it up immediately.
So does someone walk around, like maybe once a week, once a month, or what have you, to check your buildings?
I'm out and about. And when we're out and about, or any of the staff, or any of the board members, they take a look and kind of, if anything stands out, then we contact somebody to help. And that's how I found out. We don't have to worry about that, that that's through the public right of way.
Okay. I think that's the only question I have right now. I do see in the report, you had indicated that the P-Bid contract ends December 2029, but in the report it says 2024 because they're on their first five years.
Yes, and maybe I misspoke, but in the actual report, or actually, the actual P-Bid is 2024. Sorry. Sorry. It actually ends in December 31, 2024. The examples I both gave were 2029, so I may have misspoke. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any other questions. I'll just have a comment, and I don't know, maybe, Mr. Mayor, I can make my comment now?
Sure.
Okay. When this first came to the city, I think most of the people in the organization understood that I struggled with this P-Bid coming forward. But I did offer the vote for the organization, and I did say that I would be watching what was going on. So with that being said, one of the things that I would like to encourage this organization to do is I know that as a board member, you guys make decisions about what you want to do in downtown, like the planters and flowers and when the trees are going to be trimmed. But I would like to offer a suggestion that even though your property owners have the legal right to make decisions on this through the board, you know, that you also consider your, the people who rent from the property owners. Because without the merchants, the property owners wouldn't have any income in their buildings. So I think it should be cohesive effort when something big is going to happen with the improvement in downtown, that not, you know, the property owners have the decision, and that includes the city. We have a voting right, too. And we need to be consulted as a council as to how we want to move forward with our vote. But also that you at least talk to your renters downtown and ask them what their input is, because it affects the front of their stores, their businesses, and how things are going to look down there. I just think that that's how you're going to have buy-in to your program. It's not just taking into consideration what you as an organization and a board wants to do, but going to the people and saying, hey, look, we want to put planters out, or hey, we're going to cut trees on this day. Is this going to affect your business? Whatever the case may be, just make sure you're checking with your merchants and getting their buy-in as well, because that's important. And that's going to help your organization be more successful and the possibility of continuing. So I just wanted to offer that suggestion. So, I just wanted to offer that suggestion. And certainly, you know, I'm offering to our representative that when something big comes up, to bring information back to the board and to let us know, the council, and let us know so that we can have an input in on what's going on.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Mary Louise. I appreciate that.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any other council members have any, would like to speak? Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ma'am, thank you for coming up. I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate what the Downtown Association has done. Yes, there's been quite a few activities that we would not have had had it not been for the Downtown Association. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend most of them. But from my understanding, they were well-attended and they added to the flavor, if you will, of our city. So, organizations like yourself and the Chamber of Commerce, those are vital to maintain the viability of commerce, if you will, the income that we need in order to provide services for our residents. So, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Any other council members? Seeing none, my own request is I have, we have the pie chart. I'd like an itemized budget.
Okay, that I will...
I would like an itemized budget brought to the city, please, for our finance director to examine. Thank you. Very good. We'd like to see that. And not just because I'd like to see it, but because all your, how many landowners who pay into that? Yes.
It's also on our website.
And it's on, yes, okay, very good. Thank you very much. And then, the 2.5% increase, is that, Mr. Vaughn? Does that have to go through a Prop 218 process? Is that something, the city has the, is that at the city's discretion?
That's part of the vote tonight?
It is part of the annual report. So, as Ms. Souza Elms had brought up, that you can modify the plan if you want to. The board of directors voted that they would like to see the increase. But yes, council can modify the...
It's not a 218 issue.
Okay. So, it doesn't, I'm asking, Prop 218, anytime we raise any kind of property tax or water bill or anything else, we have to go through Prop 218 process? This does not. And so, will, I have more comment from council. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to make a recommendation to council that once we get the itemized budget and it's reviewed by our staff, that maybe we can go forward at that time with the vote for the percentage increase.
So, then you would like to see the item, the, let me get up here, to approve the report but not approve, but continue?
I think for transparency purposes.
Continue the raise.
Continue the raise until we get the report and our financial director has had the opportunity to review it and report back to council.
Okay, very good. So, maybe when we entertain the motion for that, and we'll take it, take it that way. At this point, I do have, there's quite a few people in the audience this evening, and I have feeling some would like to speak to this issue. I know there are some landowners here and some business owners and some local business owners. So, anyone who would like to speak to the issue from the public, I will go ahead and open up a public forum. It's not an official public hearing. It's a public forum essentially for this item. Would anyone in the public like to speak to this item at this point?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. May I have changed my name? It's still Kathy from Los Banos. My question I had, I think you have answered. I wanted an itemized list. All I see is an expense and what their budget is for the next year, divided into, I think, like five or six different items. But I don't know what they spent last year. I don't know how much went to planters, how much went to salaries, how much went to sidewalk washing. That's what I would like to see. So, I appreciate you asking for that. And can I see that later after you receive it? Will it be online or?
I would request it be brought to council as part of a, as part of the item, as part of the item for when the council goes to entertain the 2.5% increase.
Okay.
That's the way.
Then I can save on the packet.
So, that would be included in the packet, which then would be made public.
Got it. Thank you very much.
We're on good ground there, Mr. Vaughn? Okay, very good. And thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you to all the business owners for your property, maintaining your property and pushing forward to try to make the town a better place through the development of your property. And we appreciate that very much. And all the business owners who run their businesses within those buildings. So, at this point, then, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the report on the Downtown Association P-Bid minus the 2.5% increase. And I'll go to Councilmember Lewis, since she had that, she had that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Los Banos Downtown Association Business Improvement Plan Report with the addition of the Downtown Association needing to provide an itemized budget before the 2.5% increase is brought back to council for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the P-Bid report as modified by Ms. Lewis. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for all the hard work and for helping to make our city a better place. Now, we go to the general plan update. Los Banos General Plan Update Sphere of Influence. And for this, we go to Community and Economic Development Director Souza Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item is just a brief check-in with the council. Because at this time, Place Works is working on preparing and releasing the general plan, the draft general plan, as well as the draft environmental impact report. We're anticipating releasing that in summer of 2022. So, we would like to point out the sphere of influence. And the sphere of influence, we do need to receive direction tonight as that area needs to be defined to be included within the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report Study Area. So, what I do want to point your attention to is simply the area in the south portion of the city. I'm not sure that the laser is going to know. It does not work on the screens. But I'm going to use the cursor and hopefully you can see. Sorry, Sonia. This area where the hand of the cursor is, that's south of Pioneer Road. This area is where we are seeking direction tonight. Let me turn on a mic, I'm sorry. So, this area is what we're looking at, and staff is seeking direction tonight. This particular area is already in the city's adopted sphere of influence. So, the 1999's general plan, which was adopted in 1987, was presented to Lafco, the Local Agency Formation Commission of Merced County. And that boundary was adopted and certified by Lafco. So, we want to make sure, staff's recommendation is to move forward with that adopted sphere of influence. Everywhere else within that boundary, the urban growth boundary coincides with the sphere of influence except for that area of Pioneer Road, where the urban growth boundary stops at Pioneer Road. So, staff is seeking direction tonight to move forward with including the adopted sphere of influence and not recommending a change from that, which was adopted by Lafco. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. And so, first, we'll go to council to see if council has any comment or question on this item. Okay. Seeing none. The item before us tonight is to receive staff report and directions of the council. And staff is requesting that we keep the sphere of influence where it has been placed by Lafco and not, and not change it. Okay. So, that seems to be a simple direction. Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Jones, let me get, there we go. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to motion to, let's see, adopt, or actually, what are we doing on it? Is it a?
Provide staff direction.
Okay, provide staff direction with their recommendation on how to proceed with the general plan, with the sphere of influence specifically.
To keep the sphere of influence as adopted by Lafco as it pertains to Pioneer Road.
As stated.
As stated by staff. All right. Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
I'll second that.
Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Portim Lambert to direct staff as described regarding the sphere of influence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Elms. Item nine, we have commissioners, commissioners to appoint. We have Airport Advisory Commission. We have two vacancies and one on expired term. And that's expiring December 31, 2023. And so, Mr. Yamas, did you, did you want to chime in?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, very good. Okay. No problem. Getting back to the DIES system rather than the computers. So, I will go ahead and make the motion to appoint Dennis Reed to the Airport Advisory Commission. And Chair will entertain a second. Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion by the mayor, second by Ms. Lewis, to appoint Dennis Reed to the Airport Advisory Commission for the term expiring December 31, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Carried. Tree Commission, we have two appointments, Trinidad Ramos and Jean Lee. And I'll make that motion. And I have Mr. Yamas in the queue for...
I'd like to make a motion to appoint these two vacancies.
Okay. If you'd like to make the motion, I'll go ahead and yield and let you make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Go ahead. If you'd like to make the motion, feel free.
No, sir. I'm on a board.
I just assume have council make a motion.
Go ahead, sir.
So, all right. So, you want to take the second?
Yes, sir, I'll take the second.
All right. So, a motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Yamas to approve, to appoint Trinidad Ramos and Jean Lee to the Tree Commission for the two expired terms expiring December 31, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Item 10, advisement of public notices. Community and Economic Development Director Souza Elms. Busy night for...
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So, our public hearing notices, we do have four items. The first is a general plan amendment and a zone change for, and a site plan review for F Street. As you may recall, especially through the general plan update process, we are looking for areas where we can re-designate and optimize the land use to provide multifamily throughout the city to help us with our regional housing needs allocation. So, this is an area where we've identified an optimization of zoning from General Commercial to R3. This is at 1133 F Street. The next item is for a mobile food vendor. This is for El Griense Hall Number Eight. And this would be located at 1955 East Pacheco Boulevard, which is at Home Depot. The other two items, the last two items, are conditional use permits for sign variations. This is for Apex. One of the locations is at 311 West I Street. And the second location is across the street at 400 West I Street. All four of those public hearings will be held on Wednesday, April 13 at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. It'll be our first in-person planning commission meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Now, we go to City Manager's Report. City Manager, Penaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things I'd like to make note of. So, this Saturday, April 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Los Banos Fire Station Number One, we have the autism meet and greet event. So, I'd like to encourage folks to go and make your way out there if you can. This event is for children, teens, adults living with disabilities and their families to meet our local first responders and explore the equipment they may see at times in their lives. This event is designed to be a low-stress visit with no lights and sirens for a comfortable, low sensory experience. So, if you can make that this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number One. Great to have you folks out there. Also, at the same, roughly around the same time, at Olivera Park this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we'll have the great Los Banos Egg Scramble. So, you'd like to go out there and go do some egg hunting? Take your family, friends, whoever you'd like to be out there. From ages three and under, you can go there. Start at 10:30, ages four through six at 11:00, ages seven through 10 at 11:30, and all ages at 12:00 p.m. So, two events taking place this Saturday. Pretty exciting stuff and it's happening in the city. Another thing I like to tell folks about often is if you get a chance, going over to the community center, we have the rec guide over there. And there's just so many events always taking place at the community center all the time, quite often. So, if you get a chance, please go take a peek at that. It's pretty exciting, all the things we have going on in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Penaro. Well, next we come to my update on the MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V Committee. MCAG, we're going to be doing the One Voice Trip first week in May, the whole region. We fly out and meet with our federal legislators and their staffers to let them know what we need here. Our big federal asks for more money for the Pioneer Pacheco Complete Streets Program and the relocation of the airport. Relocation of the airport is, as Congress, as the congressman has said, a very big lift. Because you can't, you can't open a new airport until the, can't close the old airport until the new airport is up and running and ready to go. Very expensive thing to do. So, long-term planning, we still keep, keep it in their, in their court there so they know that we still want these things from them. Now is a good year to go after those federal monies with the big, the big funds and the big infrastructure bills. Peninsula Clean Energy, Ms. Benetti gave us a nice report at the beginning of the meeting today. She does a beautiful job handling that. Measure V Committee, I don't have anything new for that. And so, that will take me to our city council member reports. And first on the list tonight is Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing particular to report. I, for Chief Hurley, I'm going to be missing the autism this year because of the Easter egg hunt at the park, which is in my district. And they're both going on at the same time. So, I want to congratulate you on your efforts of making sure that we work with autism in our community and keep that awareness going. And it's good to see faces out here tonight at our council meeting. Thank you for the public who came.[1697.33] And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, I had the community outreach event here a couple of weeks ago, Saturday. I believe it was well-received. I believe there was over 25 people there with less than two weeks of notice and advisement to the public. Folks turned out, we had some good questions, some great questions, some great concerns. I want to thank Chief Hurley for doing that presentation, giving us a good background on the history of the, of the fire department, what they do and bring to the city. Commander Ray Reyno was there from the Los Banos Police Department. He also gave a fantastic presentation and his department's approach to crime fighting. And I also want to thank all the city personnel that helped me in making that a success, from buying the cookies, Mrs. Ballard with the ice cream. I appreciate that. That was a big hit. The staff setting up the tables. Again, it was a cohesive team effort, and I greatly appreciate everyone who took part in making that the success that it was. Let's see. Flags. If I could ask the flags at City Hall, they look like they're afraid. If we can have those replaced, I would greatly appreciate that. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Next, we have Mr. Jones.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And oops, there we go. Get our little buttons there. Bless you. And Mayor Portem Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank all the presentations that we had. Those, they were very, very well put together. But I also would like to let everyone know that our Rad Card Program is up and running. And I encourage all citizens in the, in the community to download the app, get the free money that we put out there, and support all your local businesses. There's local businesses that are slowly coming aboard, but so far, so good. So if you can put the word out there, let everyone know, it's just download the app on both your, on Android phone or Apple phone. The money's there to help support local businesses, and we would sure appreciate it. And I'm sure all the local businesses would appreciate it. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And my report tonight, I see Mr. York here tonight. We, there is a meeting, there is a meeting request between us and Caltrans to discuss the Deans and Mercy Springs Junction, which has been problematic. And so we'll be keeping you posted as to how that goes and what solutions we come up with to address that. That was brought up at Mr. Yamas's event. That's a good, one of the good things we have these events, the more contact we can have with our council and our citizens, and the more we can address our citizens' concerns. Tomorrow night is the Band Stravaganza. Los Banos Unified, the bands, elementary, junior high, high school bands will be playing 6:00. Coming out of COVID, man, it's been a, it's been a wild ride to get us all back to functioning again. In reality, it's really exciting to see all these children playing their instruments. So it'll be 6:00 at Pacheco High School tomorrow evening, Thursday, open to the public. And then this Saturday, Dr. Steve Teaching, who is now, who used to be our superintendent, is now the county superintendent, he is sponsoring an all-county honor choir program, which there are four high schools or five high schools in the county that will have an honor choir there, hours included. And that'll be Saturday evening at 6:00 in the Merced Theater downtown. There will also be three elementary choirs there from a couple of schools, two in Los Banos, I believe, and one in Merced. So lots of wonderful things going on. And of course, that great egg scramble and the autism event Saturday morning as well. So it's springtime and it's nice to be back. Thank you all for coming tonight. It feels a whole lot more alive sitting in here than sitting behind a computer screen, I can tell you, in my office. This is so much more enjoyable. Thanks again, and we'll see you all at our next council meeting. Before we say goodbye, though, we have to go into closed session. And now, Ms. Maloney, would you, would you like us to do an adjournment before or after we come out of the closed session?
I can.
Pardon me?
You can take a motion to adjourn right now.
Right now and then go into the closed session, report out. Very good. So the closed session, we have two items. Item A, public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B. Item B, public employee performance evaluation title, city manager, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And with that, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. I don't see anyone in the queue. Pardon me? Oh, okay. It's not showing up. So, okay. Ms. Lewis?
I'm still moved.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 7:11 p.m. We will report out after closed session. Thank you again for coming, everyone. All right. We've returned from closed session, and we have no reportable action. Thank you and good night.